Call this meeting to order. This is the Nottingham Planning Board. It's Wednesday, October 13th, 2021. At 7:00. Call this meeting to order. I would like to just go around the room and let members introduce themselves, starting with Mr. Davies.
Margaret Davies, alternate.
Gary Anderson.
John Warren.
Edward Veal.
Dirk Grotenheis.
Susan Mooney.
Ian McKenna.
Charlene Anderson.
Blair Haney, start the regional planning.
I'm going to take one thing out of order. And for case 21010LLA, lot line adjustment for application from Mark Matricia Watson at 7025LLC. For a lot line adjustment, property is located at Lamprey Drive, Nottingham, New Hampshire, as identified as tax map 70 lots 23 and 25. We received a letter today requesting a continuance for this meeting to hear that 30-day continuance, which would put that being heard on November 10th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant requested a December.
His letter says 30 days.
It's like 29 days.
So he would like, which date?
The December 8th.
Have any opposition to that?
No. I guess the only further discussion point might be with staff is to, at some point, it'd probably be beneficial for the applicant to decide if they want to withdraw it and you come back at another time. I think we originally accepted this five months ago.
Back in May.
Yeah, that was my question. I think it was, I guess my understanding is that they're looking at their own counsel to figure out. I know their question is specifically about the road and if it falls within what essentially what the town itself is working on right now, right?
Yeah, they requested additional time to discuss with legal counsel, which is acceptable. And we want to give them that opportunity.
I'll make the motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue case 21-010-LLA to October, I'm sorry, to December 8th, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Those in favor indicate aye. Aye, those opposed. So anybody that's in the audience that were thinking, was going to talk about that case, it will be continued until December 8th. So we'll go back to the first case here, which is 21003SIT. It's an application from Tammy DiFrancesco, trustee of Cabota Trust, requesting approval of water cross event to be held three times a year, starting in 2021. Property is located at 20, sorry, 214 Raymond Road, Nottingham, and is identified as tax map 69, lots 8 and 10.
Dirk, I didn't know, did you intend to skip over that? Section 2, the conceptual, are you going to take that? That technically was first on there.
I didn't even see that.
It snuck up there.
Usually we run those conceptuals at the end.
Okay, I just wanted to.
But that is the agenda.
Just wanted to find out, I didn't know.
Opposed to running this to the end? Okay. So we'll hear the first public hearing case. Typically, we have conceptuals listed at the end of the public hearings, after the public hearings.
They may be beneficial to hear that one after this case, before the next case. We can try to figure that out after.
The recommendation was made that because the Tom's moment, the case for the Nottingham Business Park is related, so the recommendation was made to have the conceptual or it's beforehand for hearing the Nottingham Business.
I don't think it matters of the order if we hear the conceptual before, after this first case and then before the second case. Let's do that. Yeah. Okay, welcome back, thank you. We did receive a lot of the information that you provided since our last meeting. And we did receive a letter back from the fire department indicating that the spill prevention plan or the emergency plan was adequate. There was a couple other items that we had requested to be placed on the plan, which I did do a cursory review of those plans, and it does look like those have been placed on the plan. I'm going to turn to Blair just to make sure that you've reviewed those and that's on there. And then the other item was what?
I just gave.
Oh, the, also the emergency access throughout through the self-property.
Yeah, I sent that over.
Yep, yeah, we have that here.
I put the whole packet together for the fire, the building, and the town file in a red folder that is all ready to go with everything that I sent in one package.
Great, thank you for compiling all that information. Blair, do you have any other updates of what has been submitted or review on that?
Yeah, honestly, no. As I said in my memo, it looks like, it appears like the applicant net one request that the town had made, you know, from my notes from the last one, we asked for a stronger, more clear language from this self-property trustees or administrator, you know, organize consolidated emergency and safety plan, emergency action plan, final site plan showing parking, maximum occupancy, 1,500 at a time, that was proposed by the applicant and then we based everything else off of that. The request that the driveway be free and clear, and that was put in there. And then get the emergency plan to the town departments to review. And those are the major items that I had down, and it seems like they're all there. I like the way the words action plan came out, but having it just all in one single document, because that's what the fire department, the police department are probably going to have in their hands, they're not going to have this whole binder of, you know, all the things, the site plan or D things, but just having this one document would be helpful for them. So I appreciate the applicant's patience for doing that. But I think at the end of the day, the fire chief signing off on it indicates that it does meet the needs. So beyond that, as I indicated in the memo, that they had met everything. There was discussion, there was a comment about the racer overflow parking shown in the plan, and the board can discuss that. I did put some information there, having taken a look at the zoning ordinance. If you have further questions on that, I can do a best to answer on that. And then, yeah, as I said, the fire department has reviewed it. I put in some proposed conditions, above the standard conditions, and you all are looking to use it. Some of these things are mentioned in there, but they were kind of called out a couple times, that's why I thought I would put it in there as a particular condition, the food truck vendors being licensed, and the fireworks and fires being presented. It has been mentioned, I believe it's in the plans actually, but just, it might be something that you want to sort of like doubly hear for the best response.
Yeah, I did read that the food truck, the fires, and the aqua protection were notes added to the plan.
Yeah, it would be difficult to say it, but it's, there's no, there's no part.
Just reinforces it.
Because then it becomes a condition that is more enforceable as part of the permit. But that's.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's all on there.
Yeah, I'm pretty, as far as I saw.
Yep, the notes are on there.
Everything's on it now. It was just that the plan's only so big to put every single thing on there that was getting invested.
Any comments from the board on any of these updates and?
Yeah, I had a question. So we've been proceeding with plans, especially with the parking, and what went to zoning was, you know, shown as the original layout of parking, and then all of a sudden at the last meeting, you know, drawn in was this racer parking, overflow parking, and now additional to that is all the 20 spots, we did 20 additional spots for staff and other parking. So I don't know why that is getting added in kind of last minute, because that's not what was shown during the site walk or what was proposed. And at the last meeting, it was specifically stated that this area would, this would go away, this wouldn't be on the plan, the final plan. So I'm not certain why that's.
Well, we didn't, because we were adding in the staff parking and the racer parking, we weren't really putting them in the spectator area, they always park there anyway, so I figured, well, that's where they park, we might as well put it on the plan.
It was mentioned before that she did mention that the staff did park at her house, at her parking lot, which is.
We have a really large driveway.
Yeah. I guess, so that partially explains that area, but the other area with the racer parking, overflow parking over near the pit area, that was drawn in at the last meeting and was stated that it would be removed, it wouldn't be on the final.
Because you said something about the setback, but then when we realized it was, it was within the setbacks that it needed to be, we just left it there.
Okay. I guess that changes, I mean, it changes some of the scope of, you know, that's your pit area, and you're going to have to get it out.
Only, well, there's still, there's still area to leave open, but because a lot of the trailers, the trucks pull the trailers in there, instead of unhooking them and going to park somewhere else, there's place, there's space for them to park there, so we might as well just put it on there.
And that's outside the 50-foot setback, right?
No, he's, it's 20-foot setback, and it's within it, and I just gave Blair a plan that's got, you can say that it's within the 20-foot, so here it is. So they're all, they meet the 20-foot setback for it, because it's accessory, because it's not like a camping, or it's not, it's not something that's hooked to water and sewer.
Looks like it's the same plan we have.
Yeah, he just, he just, after talking to Blair today, just outlined the line of a clearer.
Oh, okay.
So those RVs or whatever they are, those wouldn't be parked there, the things that were large.
Tractor trailer?
Tractor trailers.
It's just the snowmobile trailers, actually.
Snowmobile trailers.
My understanding is that the three of all are sort of like large trails that have been there for a while, is that my understanding?
Oh, those ones, those ones that are, the, those ones are there, yeah, but like the ones that, the snowmobile trailers that are here too.
The three there inside the setback are your trailers, correct?
They're shown as additional trip trucks.
Yeah, no, those are snowmobile trailers.
Yeah, no, it's not attracted.
For the purpose of the event.
Yeah.
So there's two different kinds of trailers there.
Not for the event. The other ones are storage trails that have been there forever.
Okay, that's what I remember. Those long ones are storage trails.
Storage trailers, yeah.
They've been there forever.
Forever.
Okay. The smallerish ones, the ones that there's like a dozen on there, those are the snowmobile trailers. And those are ones that will come and go as part of the event, but as far as the setback is concerned, the zoning ordinance regulates RVs and travel trailers. And that is, those are not supposed to be inside the setback, which they're not. And they're, yes, the RVs and travel trailers are not supposed to be inside the setback, but these are not RVs or travel trailers, they're just towing vehicles.
Just like the ones we're going to put up for sound at the beginning of the bridge.
Yeah. And when I spoke to Tammy, there was a question about their, the 50-foot setback line was on here, but that actually didn't come into play, and so they provided this additional document that shows the 20-foot setback clause, just to be clear about it. The three long ones are theirs, and they are effectively staying there, but they're not moving. It's the other smallerish ones, if you will, that are ones that are new to this application for the event. If that adds any clarity.
And so those are, those trailers you're referring to are really transport trailers for snowmobiles?
Correct.
But they park there, they can, sometimes they're connected to their truck.
So I guess normally under like site plan and such, there's usually, you know, some sort of, sort of buffer that's required between deferring uses, so even if a butter is okay with a use, there's still supposed to be, you know, a buffer provided between conflicting uses, so you have commercial use and residential use behind it, and now there's no buffer.
Where?
Between, between this lot and the lot behind it.
Mine?
Nope.
Oh, Artie's field?
Yes.
But those trailers have already been there, those aren't there for the event, if we have to move them, we'll move them.
I guess.
We're planning on moving them anyways.
Those are existing, these are the oil parking four ones.
Yeah, I guess my thing up is just that, you know, pieces added on, you know, to the plan after, and I don't know if the.
Those trailers were always there.
Because when we did the site walk, it was outlining, you know, where the parking would be, and I don't remember there being, you know, potential other parking, other spots, and we had a chance to view and see kind of like, you know, where the, all this parking would be, we didn't even walk up to your house and see that there'd be 20 other spots up there, you know, for additional cars.
But that's just staff parking, it's, I shouldn't say just, but those are not visitors, and they're not patrons of this, right?
It's related to the event, that would be.
Yeah, it's, I understand that.
I think, I guess the point, I guess the point though is, they wouldn't park there anyways, so the point is they just showed them just so that.
I just showed them.
We're making aware, making them, us aware of them now.
Right.
So if somebody's showing up to the event and seeing all these cars up there.
Party of somebody.
Both, both lots are in the application, so.
I mean, if you have a big party, do you have 20 cars there anyway?
That's what I'm saying, like, I just wanted to put it on the plan in case anybody else, so we have that many cars there all the time.
I think the additional detail that I've seen, even if it's, you know, as simple as calling up the snow fence or something like that, I think of, there's more stuff called out that I'd rather see on the plan than.
We just want to make sure we put overabundance on the plan because we didn't want to have that.
Yeah, well, I assume for you guys from an operations standpoint, that way you can, if you have somebody setting up, you don't have to walk them around and tell them what to do, they kind of have an idea of what's going on.
So we don't have anything in our zoning that would preclude them parking those trailers?
I answered it from the perspective of what we discussed prior, because accessory But I talked about buffer zones, and I'm trying to quickly scroll through to see if like, there is any requirement for visual barriers or, yeah, 50-foot wide, or 40-foot wide, and sometimes you see that in zoning by all of us, especially when you have a commercial use next to a residential use, you see that. I'm not seeing anything so far.
I don't think we do, I think we just have the larger setback, we just have 100 or 150-foot setback.
And what's, what's the struggle here is that this is not a permanent use, I mean, this is a event that happens those times of the, of the year, and the other times of the year, it's not there, it's, this isn't going to be done, this isn't happening every day.
Well, Monday through Thursday on a week of an event, the gravel pit's operating, and it's back and forth, back and forth, there is no observance of the lot lines, so it's, it'd be kind of odd to observe some degree of a buffer for the purpose of like a weekend event.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, I, yeah, I'm not seeing anything mentioned. I've gone through the residential agricultural district pretty thoroughly, and I'm not seeing anything there.
Move on, just wanted to get clarification on that, and thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I want to open it up to the public, for the public hearing, we still, I didn't close a public hearing last time, right?
I don't think so.
I held the public hearing open, in case there's anybody who would like to talk or speak to or for or against this application. And that would be the process where we would get public input, we've had a number of these hearings, so if you've spoken at a previous hearing, I just ask that, you know, we've heard you and we've incorporated what we can into this application, but now would be the time that if anybody would like to talk about this application. Mr. Demare.
I don't know, there you go.
You, wherever you want to speak from, just state your name.
Sam Gar, Chair of the Conservation Commission here in town. We just had an extra-long breeding season this year, and we wanted to, you know, maybe not, you know, have like the first event, if it was going to be in July, not either the first two weekends. You know, we, anything after that would be fine.
You're saying you don't want any events between January 1st and the lot, second week of July?
Well, they're, they're breeding season, I mean, you know, from late spring and, you know, through like mid-July, but the middle of July is that third weekend, and we have no objections to having the thing on the third weekend.
They, I'm not sure that that's wholly up to the board here to determine their schedule because we can't, we don't, we don't know what weekend, they haven't proposed a weekend, and that may vary from time to time, from year to year. I think that's probably better, something that would be.
Feedback to the select board.
Feedback to the select board, because they will have to obtain a permit once a year, when those are scheduled. I understand it, but I don't want to have the planning board dictate their event dates. I think that's just a little too restrictive.
I think the application specifically just says three times a year, that's all that we've been asked to approve, right?
Well, and originally, the ZBA allowed it minus three holidays, but in their second one, they forgot about those holidays.
We had to rehear the whole thing.
And, yeah, right, and didn't include those holidays.
I think one of them was July 4th, I still, I don't remember what the other ones were.
Memorial, July 4th, Labor Day.
Labor Day.
No, no.
Okay, so the most recent, the second?
When they reheard the whole case all over again, yeah, they didn't give conditions.
Would you be, would it be okay if we conditioned it to not have those three holidays?
We wouldn't want them to have a holiday.
Yeah, we wouldn't do that, okay, well, we'll add that to the condition.
I think that's where, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up on what Mr. Demare had to?
Yes.
To say?
Sure.
The planning board had received a letter, CC to you, Tammy, about recommendations for water quality and noise and other issues.
Yeah, you spoke about that.
I'm losing my voice, I'm sorry. And a lot of wildlife, amphibians, birds, bats, are very sensitive to noise during breeding season, and oftentimes they will just not breed. And recently, I learned that there is a breeding pair of loons at your end of the lake, and there has been also a breeding pair at the northern end of the lake where I live, and they are very sensitive to human disruption and noise. And there's been a pair of bald eagles this summer, also on the southern part of the lake, with an immature that's been hanging out, whether they decide to stay or not, is moved. So I would really strongly recommend and would prefer it to be a condition of approval, whether it's prudent for us to do so, that the first event not be held until after 14 calendar days have passed in July. As an advocate and speaking for wildlife, people can wear headphones, people can leave, but the wildlife cannot.
I know, but we do, not, no disrespect, we do have a noisy pit. When the dry crane is up there, it's loud.
I know, I know.
So we can't stop that either, so, I mean, I don't know the event schedule, and what he, they have to try to make it work around other races that happen throughout the country, so I don't know any of that.
Okay, I'm just saying, from my personal view on this application, I think it's wonderful recreation for kids, for adults. I was especially sensitive to the letter from the fellow who grew up in Lawrence on the streets, having been a high school teacher in Havel for my career, I know that some of these kids are so disadvantaged, and I was very sympathetic, particularly to that fellow who spoke in favor. But I have to say, I really would appreciate if the first event wasn't scheduled until after 14 calendar days in July, for the wildlife that doesn't speak up. Okay? Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, so just to clarify, so I've got, I didn't, I don't have the, the second, it was the decision that went out for the zoning board, the first one had two conditions originally, and one was that no events will be held on major holidays, Memorial Day, 4th of July, Labor Day, but the first one was no practice or other events will be held outside of pre-approved and no states agreed upon, the town not again. So if they, if the second approval didn't have either of those, it's something we probably should incorporate into ours, I think they've, I feel like that was in here somewhere, I'm not sure it's not a note already.
Yeah, it is a note, I mean, just specific to when they're going to, they're going to hold the events.
Yeah, just the weekend operations.
Yeah, just the event part.
There isn't the.
I think that restriction from the zoning board was literally, like, on a random weekend, you wouldn't have just private races going on, is that what that, it's been a while since I watched that.
I don't really know why they did that, but, I mean, we're just trying to get the events approved.
Yeah, I feel like it was part of what's been said at this meeting, at some of these meetings before, was that, you know, if this is approved, that, that you're basically agreeing to not have any, not utilize the pit privately for this event, any kind of events like this.
Isn't that why that we went to zoning, though?
The zoning would have been just the ability to do any of the racing, period. I guess I'd be in favor, we might as well, questioning why the zoning board, the conditions didn't find their way to the rehearing, but.
No idea.
Well, I watched the videotape of it, it's because they didn't remember.
Okay.
I think I'd be in favor of, I guess the conditions have already been agreed to at the zoning board level, but it seems like they've been missed, but it seems like it can be in our purview to include those as our conditions. I guess I'd say I'm not really in support of, right now, putting a restriction on the second week in July, just because if you look at the calendar and it's New England, if you look at second week of September or the second week of July, that's a short period of time to fit in three events, working around a circuit schedule or something like that.
The reason we were trying to do it early spring is because we didn't want to upset the people on the lake, so.
And it's just two days.
And it is, it is crushed, just like last summer, it was, it seems like it's going to be all summer, and we're trying not to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it just shortens, it's probably half the period of time you even have to be able to host the events. But, like John knows, that'll be handled through the select board when they come for their permits anyway, and approval dates. I guess at that time, it can be a discussion for the select board.
I think it'd be germane to just reincorporate those two comments, those two conditions that were original, back into the, back onto that plan.
Support that.
The other question I, I had is, so this is called Water Cross Event, I've heard, and it's called the Northeast Water Cross?
It's the circuit, right? The Northeast Water Cross is kind of like the.
Right. So in the emergency management plan, it specifically speaks to gentlemen being responsible for part of it, and my understanding is that gentleman is associated with the Northeast Water Cross event. So my question is, is when we make this, do we make it a? So my question is, is when we make this, do we make it a condition of not Water Cross events, but Northeast Water Cross events? Because there's responsibility in the emergency management plan, specific to that gentleman?
I would, I would think of it as, if we're gonna have anything in there, that we would say something about the emergency manual, emergency plan would need to be updated annually.
Only, only because?
Who knows? I mean, he may not be a part of that same group next time.
Same group, yeah.
Right now, we want to make sure that somebody's named in it, so that we have their phone number and know where to find.
You can say future owners or future event operator, essentially, that's pretty common with state permits.
And the, now that it's zoned for it, it's going to go with the property, right?
Right. That carries forward to every previous future owner, too, so.
And I feel like, yeah, that, that would be part of the, any other additional permits that are required from the town, as well as the, the fire chief's, you know, letter indicates, you know, that he, he reserves a right for each, prior to scheduled event if needed. So I think, I think.
That might be more of just a living kind of document that.
Got it. My question about the extra practice, though, so my grandson really likes it now, so like, he can't just come over on a weekend and do it, try. That's why, that's why I don't want to tie it in. My grandkids really like it. So, not that, it's not an event, so that's why I really don't want it tied in. I mean, we won't, it's not going to be an event, but I don't want to have, right now, it's private property and you can do what you want to do on your private property. So if my grandson wants to come over and ride his bicycle on my property, he can. If he wants to try out a snowmobile, he should be able to be able to try that. So that's why I really don't want that tied into that.
So in earlier meetings, it was stated here multiple times by yourselves, that as part of this process, you realize you, you were okay with giving that up.
Yeah, we're not having practices, but I'm just saying, I don't want to be eliminated to not have anybody such as one person or him or us, or.
But the part of it was kind of like mitigating the additional noise to the butters and saying, okay, we're, we're limiting, we know right now, private property owners, you know, we could go out and ride our snowmobiles every day if we wanted, but we're going to give that up for these three weekends a year, you know, knowing that we're, it's a trade-off of.
I, I didn't, I didn't see it that way.
I believe that was maybe the intent of some of the people during the zoning board process.
But it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't going to be a huge practice event, like with.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'd be really against having a restriction to people using their own property like that. You know, what's, what's, how was the town preventing other people on lakes doing the same exact thing?
Well, the attorney, your attorney actually said that they can do that.
We can, we've been told that multiple times.
This is for 1,500 people, like, this is for a commercial.
Right, they're not going to, the racers aren't going to show up and practice on another weekend.
This isn't for their use of the property, this is for a commercial event.
Right.
The practice is an event. The practice, I mean, the event is the event, the practice is, we just put it on there because they just do, they come right before the event, but that's not what, that's not what I meant.
Right, what's before us, I think, is the fact that this is an event that's held publicly, paid event, and, and we have to remember that, it's not a private event we're talking about.
Right, it's a commercially opened event.
I think, I think to Ed's point, we've read those conditions. You could keep a condition in there and just say, an organized, I mean, essentially, we're regulating an organized racing event. Your grandchild riding on a lake isn't organized, you could just add in that condition language, no organized event races or something like that, and that just basically.
Yeah, I guess what's to prevent, you know, them getting, the police called on them every single time that someone hears a snowmobile fire up on their, on their property, to make sure that that's not, you know, that's not what it is.
What's to prevent?
I mean, they could just.
You, you from doing it on your property and the police not calling it?
I understand, I'm just looking for clarification, because again, it was stated multiple times at this board that they understood there was a condition being placed. So I was trying to make sure I got clarification, because that condition apparently went away the second time the variance was granted, because the zoning board forgot what they approved, because it had been a few months in between.
I, I, we're not here to correct the zoning board. I understand that there, there are some things that are probably reasonable, and, and like, the holidays are certainly reasonable, but the ambiguity of what a practice is, in this case, would be a practice for the race or for the event. Not a practice for anything else but for this event. That's, that's how I always interpreted the whole time that I've been listening to this case. Not that anybody can't go out there and just run their, that's, that's my, how I heard it. I, I don't think we can really stretch those boundaries of how far we're going into regulating their property for this specific application.
Yeah, I'm not looking to stretch boundaries, I was trying to get clarification on a prior condition that had been set and agreed upon, that apparently went away, to make sure we all understood that it's not there anymore, and what it was.
Well, we also are thinking here is that, we also, maybe the zoning board didn't want to do that. Maybe they didn't want to have conditions. We're not here to interpret what they have. We have a, they have a, you know, approval to do something from the zoning board. That, these conditions are not on that approval anymore. I think it's reasonable that we can give them, you know, that, that they've even stated the holidays, they don't want to do them on holidays.
But we're also adding other conditions that the zoning board never added. So we add conditions, they add conditions, they don't add conditions, we don't add conditions. It's fine, I just wanted clarification, because again, it's a condition that was there, it's gone, it was something that was mentioned at this meeting a bunch of times. And I'm looking for clarification, because it's not on the plans now, so I'm trying to understand, you know, whether or not we incorporate that or discuss it.
So, so the clarification is either, either you think the practice is for the event at any point tied to this event, or the practice is any practice by anybody on that property. So I think those are the two, and I think we're going to need to leave it up to the members here on what they think that is. Any other comments?
I think it's just worthwhile, I mean, if you need to award the approval, it's for the three ti, three events per year, where we're going to have the 1,500 spectators, paid event, and you can just add on with, with no additional organized racing. I mean, basically, it's right, one guy riding around in a circle, he's not racing himself, so that's, I wouldn't consider that practice, I wouldn't consider that a race. But if they had five people come over and there's somebody sitting there with a timer and a flag, and it's racing, like, if, that's enforceable. I mean, you couldn't argue that's not a race, and I would say that if we just put on the restriction, there's no other organized racing outside of the three events. And it's still vague enough that, like, two guys are out there, but.
So five votes on Patacaway next to Chalona going, is that a race?
Well, yeah, let's, let's talk in the board, we're going to talk in the board about this.
I think you can bring that up, but I mean, it does go back to.
Sorry, I need to cut you off, but. Yeah. Before we go any further in this, the board of selectmen have to write the permit that gives them allowed to do this. If over the next year or two, they become a nuisance and this event becomes an whole lot of things, the board of selectmen, again, I'll get clarification, we might like be, have to give them their permit. And then the racing goes all away, because they're just being a problem for the town. And we're giving them permission, by doing this, we're giving permission for them to have this event, and by doing that, they get a permit.
Well, you're, that, that permit application is more for, to notify of the safety department that, hey, this 1,500 people coming into town.
But they still have to have a permit, schedule dates and times and stuff like that.
It's not necessarily that you're gonna.
I'm not saying we are, I have, I'm just asking.
The gavel down, say, no, you're not going to hold it because we got three police calls about it.
Well, wouldn't that be safety issues? If the police are being called for it?
But you're, you're kind of stating it that you're going to be the.
It's a discussion here, but I don't know. I mean, we've never given, per se, I mean, this event like this in town, this is all new as we come together about this, so.
Right.
So let, let me pause here, because we're in a public hearing, we actually have public here to speak, so we can talk a little bit more after the public hearing as well. So if there is anybody else after Sam that wanted to talk about anything, we can, okay, then I'll close the public hearing. And now we can talk some more, if we need to.
I think the way I was going with it is, there was multiple meetings, I was on the Zoom calls, listening, there was 100 people there, and there was a condition agreed upon that, I think it was strict enough that, like, they wouldn't be allowed to do anything on this pond. I agree, it's, that's fairly strict. I think throwing in the language, just saying, outside of the three events, there's no other organized racing, and that's, it's still leaving it open that your grandson can go out on the lake or on the pond and ride. It's just, I think that's the concern, and when I say organized racing, you know, spectators, I mean, there's a lot that goes into.
But why would we be even giving them a permit? If they're going to do that, then they will be doing it outside of a permitted event anyway. So they only have three permitted events, weekends.
Yeah.
If they're going to do it another time, then that's a fourth, which they don't have a permit for.
If you want to, if you want to interpret like that, but then, I guess there's no need, what you're saying is don't add that condition.
Yeah, I, I don't see a condition needed to be added for it. If we want to call it, you know, organized practice, no organized practice for events.
I'm fine with that, I just think you can, I don't think we need a condition, I think we can just modify the approval language, say, three times a year, we're approving this event here that we're reviewing, and then outside of that, there's no external race prac, I mean, I guess you can use anything, it's just.
Yeah, I mean, that.
It's worth adding some degree of a language. I agree that we don't have to uphold the ZBA, the zoning board's original conditions.
No, I just thought it was worth mentioning, again, this, we've had the case before us for a while, there's been a lot of pieces moving, so trying to keep.
And I don't think that adding that language is restrictive to the point, it's going to control them riding on the weekends, because that's not, it's not an organized practice or just leisurely.
I think to what John was talking about is, if there was, one, two, two more events that were done unpermitted, that's going to, the, the select board is going to find out about that, and they're going to question it when it comes time to, to release a permit. So there are a lot of, I think, backups here.
And that'll be, yeah, and that'll be done outside the variance that they obtain, and they'll be done outside the site plan approval if given, then, so they would be in violations, clear violations that are enforceable.
Mr. Chair, I think that we could tighten up the language by just adding, open to the public. So these Water Cross events are open to the public. If they want family and friends to come over and, and race around the pond, that's not open to the public. And that would define these events a little tighter.
Well, on the, can I speak?
Sure.
On the policy, on the event policy that they produced, it says on there what an event is. So it says that it's people that are coming, there's a competition, there's spectators, there's this, but it doesn't, you know, you can have a wedding, you can have a graduation, you can have those kind of things, like, that's what you need to get the permit for. That's what I've read, on the policy, on the policy permit.
Did we want to discuss these other suggested conditions, the food license and?
The, the aquifer and the, we can add them, they, they have added them to the plans, but we can make them a part of the condition as, just to reinforce it.
Yeah, consistent with the town's water protection overlay districts, Note 1, food truck vendors, language is Note 20, and the fireworks and fires is Note 13, that's on the, the plan set now.
So I, I guess, Blair, we do have these conditions of approval, some of them have boxes with checks in them, what does that mean?
My understanding is these are the standard orders of conditions of approval.
But these, these have not been done yet, right? So the ones that have checks in them are ones that we would have as conditions? I'm, I'm, I'm just talking out loud, so maybe I just thought myself through it, that yes, so.
The wetlands in alteration.
Yeah, because there is no shoreline protection, so that box not checked. And they probably already have some of those permits of curb cut.
Technically, the wetlands in alteration of terrain is outside of this, that's a separate, my understanding that's a separate issue on the site, right?
But we can condition it that they get it.
Yeah, I did see there were some deadlines that they self-imposed on themselves, too.
Yeah, because we haven't received the plans that are, have seals and signatures on it, and that's typical because we. Or have we?
They dropped one, you have one.
Okay, so we have, okay, I'm corrected. Sorry, I was corrected then. So that's, that's done. So we don't need to make that a condition, because it's done. That's what I'm trying to determine, so if it's checked off.
I guess.
Maybe it's done.
The way I have understood it was that it was a standard set of approvals, obviously, the option is there to pull off certain ones that just are not even applicable, like the shoreline, shoreline protection, for example, but they act as a catch-all, just in case there was something that wasn't there. That kept overlooked, but these were there, just to make sure that these minimum standards were met. If they've been done, much like the ones that I had recommended, fine, this is just in effort to reinforce certain ones that have elevated themselves. And I interpreted these ones, the ones at the top, as being ones that have just sort of elevated themselves over time, just cover ourselves.
Click the five standard ones that go in every single approval.
That was what I understood, if I am mistaken, I apologize, but that was what I understood it, so, yes. You are willing to remove or add any of these conditions, as you said. I kind of figured you had, like, I've heard this on boards where they say, we are approving this with our standard set of conditions, and then we're going to add the following ones, which would be these ones down at the bottom, subsequent other conditions. So by saying our standard positions, you're kind of capturing any one of these where the box is shipped. That's how I interpret it, but if that's not the case, then.
Can I ask a question? Is the site, so the site plan review for this is the same as you follow for billing site plan? Because we're not billing anything?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, so.
If that's not the case, then you're.
We, we, I guess, it would be nice if someone could try and form this into a motion.
I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think about it.
So I guess, before I do that, you know, so I'm greatly appreciative of all the detailed information that was been on here, and I guess where I'm hung up is that, a number of times, you know, and in this case and other cases, people will bring up, you know, when referencing noise, which I think is the biggest complaint from the butters and others, it is, is referenced to Lee USA Speedway, or Star Speedway, or Epping. And it's never generally in a positive way, it's something, oh, yeah, you know, that's there, we have to deal with it, and, you know, it's because it's there, we have to deal with it now. But those are done pre-zoning, pre-protections. The gravel pit is, is, there's language from state RSAs that kind of ties the hands of a town on regulation of those. So when we're talking about, you know, only commercial racing of any sort in the town of Nottingham, in a residential agricultural zone, you know, I think everybody should just think about it and act on it as you will, but regardless of that, you know, I think all the data that we've gotten to this point has at least allowed us to take action tonight, you know, final action tonight, one way or the other.
All right. So we have the conditions, standard conditions. We then have the condition, I'll just list these. That, the condition subsequent to, consistent with the town's aquifer protection overlay district, Article 3, Section A of the zoning ordinance, should be no disposal of solids, no onsite disposal, storage, processing, or recycling of toxic or hazardous materials or wastes, no burial of petroleum products, no unenclosed or uncovered storage of road salt or de-icing chemicals, or dumping of snow containing these same chemicals. That's the note that is shown on the plans, and we can add that as a condition. Another note that has been added to the plans, but would be good to highlight, is food truck vendors will be required to have a state peddler's license, New Hampshire DHHS, mobile food unit license, and any other applicable state or local licenses. Additionally, they must comply with NFPA 1, NFPA 96, and the authority having jurisdiction reserves final decision authority in these matters.
I was going to say, on that one, it's Note 20 on the plans, and this is super minor, it's only, please are going to get reprinted for any reason. I think it says all four vendors, F O O R, instead of food vendors. F O O R, instead of food vendors.
On the plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the third would be fires.
That's a little.
Fireworks are prohibited.
On that last one, fire, fireworks are prohibited. Should we say during these events?
I was just gonna, yeah.
Well, that's fine. That can add more clarity, but again, this is for this, these events.
Okay.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that they never can have them.
Okay, just fine then. I was just putting, throwing it out there.
And then the last one, the no events on Memorial, July Fourth, or Labor Day weekend?
Three holidays.
See, you need to add those on there, even though some, most of those are on there except for that one.
It's just, yeah, just so it lives, just so it lives in approval, I think, of the town hall.
Yeah, and that's fine. So we'll have the Memorial, Fourth, and Labor Day. So that's a fourth condition. And are we going to add a condition relative to practicing? If so, what would that language be? If not, we can just move on.
I like the idea of it, but it sounds like the wording of it is gonna get a little tricky in terms of enforcement from the law side, so it's almost like an exclusive ordinance. If you don't mention it, it falls under the, there's only three approvals, like Gary said, so.
Suggest we move on.
Okay. So those are the conditions. Can someone move those?
Can I?
A board member.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number twenty-one dash zero zero three dash S I T with the conditions as follows, as read, conditions referring to town's aquifer, Article Three, Section A, also conditions as read, food truck vendors and peddlers licensed, et cetera, and also the condition of the event not taking place on three holidays, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Labor Day.
Can fires and fireworks be prohibited?
And.
Fire and fireworks.
And, oh, so yes, fireworks. Fires and fireworks are not prohibited, are prohibited.
Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Any other discussion? Those in favor indicate aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
That's four. Those opposed? That's three. Order three. It's granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, do we need to do something different with the plans that we have, or the big plans that you have?
Yeah, he'll need to correct that typo.
The D?
F O O R.
Add the holidays.
That, and add the note of the holidays.
The holidays, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. So we'll have the, now the case of the conceptual with Tom Molton, one forty-five to one sixty-five Old Turnpike Road.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'll have to recuse myself since I'm the Director Butter to Lot Ten on this case, one forty-five.
Even as a conceptual?
I, if it moves forward, I don't wanna be involved in that.
Okay.
Yep.
Ian, or, I'll seat Buzz. It's a conceptual, so I don't need to seat anybody.
Right.
Right.
I have some smaller versions of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In fact, does Ian even have to step down in the conceptual?
What's that?
Does Ian have to, have to step down in the conceptual?
There's no voting.
It's just a bunch of questions.
But it's.
I'll look at the plan after.
Okay, you have the floor.
Great, thank you.
I just wanna make sure you understand that the conceptual application is non-binding. So anything here, we're trying to provide is really just a guideline of how you could come in for an application.
Right, that's what the idea is. I'm Tom Molton. How about those Red Sox, huh? If anybody's a Red Sox fan, wow. It's like, where do they come from? As I'm Tom Molton, I'm the owner, or the new owner, I guess, of the property we're talking about. I'm living the sea coast, went to UNH, and live in New Hampshire for many years, raised my family. Here, and this is a Denny Hamel from the GM Two Engineering Firm. Denny has a deep knowledge of this property, because he worked on it years ago. When I called, it was kind of good, because we played hockey together, we hadn't talked to each other for years, so it's like, wow, well, good job. So, you know, exactly what you said, Mr. Chairman, we wanted to come in and just try to find out what we could do to turn this property into something productive, what I would consider a win-win for both the town, myself, and the community. I've done this for many years. I've got a great track record in Hampton. I've developed a lot of the Drake River Business Park, been able to assist a lot of industrial users that provide employment and bring things to the community. One of my colleagues, since I brought a company up from Amesbury called Brazonics, a big aerospace company, came into Hampton and provided over a hundred and ten high-paying, great jobs. That's kind of like, kind of what I vision could be done here. Obviously, there's a lot of history of this property that I knew nothing of. I can assure you, we're not looking to boil the water, so don't worry about that. I know it's not used for that, but. So we have an existing building right now, the original building that's there, the metal structure that's up there now, in the process of looking for some, hopefully some low-impact use, such as storage, light manufacturing, whatever. I'm just telling you what the idea is. A lot of things I've discovered with this, the people are looking for storage, this is a twenty-eight, I guess what I'm asking, there's some zoning things we have to go to, but I want to kind of give you the bigger vision, so you could totally understand what I'd be, you know, trying to do to make this work. It's a twenty-eight-foot clear-span building right now. A lot of people are looking for forty-foot, and some of them, and maybe in the thirties. There is a process, it's expensive, but it can be done, the roof could be raised, you know, four feet, and then maybe another ten feet, which would require zoning variance for the height of a building. Right now, if I can find somebody for twenty-eight foot clear, that's great. There is one person we're quoting, if you will, it's got a thirty-two foot requirement, so you'd need another three feet to get you to thirty-five or thirty-six, which I think is above the zoning requirements. We might wanna look at that, but I'm trying to make the eyesore on this building productive and meaningful, because there's a lot of infrastructure there. The other part of this, which is kind of odd, in back of this, there's a zoning, I'm sorry, yeah, the zoning, we have commercial industrial front and a residential in the back. Kind of a wide thing, because if you did not do any residential in the back, not many people wanna go through commercial or an industrial park to get to their home. I just don't think it makes sense. A lot of the land in the back is not usable. We have a pond in the upper left, and there's some wetlands that has to be crossed, which we wouldn't touch. I've talked to the Conservation, Dwayne Hyde, I think his name is, to talk about maybe even giving some of the land to conservation. It's fine with me, we just make sure it makes sense for everybody. So one of the other requirements that is asked is maybe we could take that line and make it all commercial. So we can, if you look at the conceptual, where the red line goes, we could make that backland just all commercial. Makes sense, I'm just trying to give some input here, but that would make sense to make it all commercial, so you don't have to split it up. Another, so what we try to do is come up, so we have the existing building, let me get to, then there's an abutting building that's already there. There were three buildings that were, and that's what's gonna be coming up next, three buildings that were vacant and basically left, abandoned, I guess you'd say. The third one, the one in the front, definitely.
Could you just point to those three on the plan?
Oh, sure, yeah.
These, these two buildings are here, and it was a house-looking structure that used as an office back when this operation was a commercial facility.
Yeah.
Thanks.
We've kind of, you can hear it from the gentleman coming, looking to go in there. So I have a tenant, someone that's looking to go into this space, do woodworking, drug bed liners, I think there'd be a fine use for the property, put it to use, get some tax dollars and some employment out of it. The one in the front, kind of ascertained when I went through it together, there's two sections in the building on each end, probably have to be demolished. They're really, you've got a lot of water damage, it's been sitting here for a long time. He thinks he may be able to salvage that, and that's a conversation for another time. But the idea is he's gonna try to maybe salvage some of that building, demolish it, and maybe salvage a piece that's good, and then fix the other two ends of it. That'll be good, because that'll be up and going, you know, relatively soon if you approve the change of use or the use of the property going forward. The other section, where there would be an entrance, you could see there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lots. And we try to come up with various sizes to accommodate different-sized businesses, not knowing what we're going to be using. I would probably, most likely, have a water system or system set up to sprinkle the big building, and then water, domestic water going down to be available for water for sprinkler and for, you know, domestic use, which that's really what you'd be using for toilets, sinks, things like that. It, one of the, one of the lemmas you find out is, it's pretty onerous, the setbacks in this, in the ordinances, which really restrict what you can do, and you don't, wouldn't get at least an economic yield out of it to make it work. I don't think it's a big impact, there's plenty of open space, so that's another area that we would look at, to at least see if we could get some relief in the setback requirements. It's not in any area, this is a residential area, it's on Route Four. So based on that overall view, that's kind of what we're looking to do. Build a route with a cul-de-sac, have some alternative, for fire department, have alternative exits, probably with crash gates, et cetera. But I just wanted to find out if the board thought that this is something to be good for the community. Do I abandon it? Do I try to, you know, I'm willing to put time, money, and resources in this thing to help develop it, to develop it, you know, for tax base of the town, no impact with the scroll system, and create some jobs, which obviously everybody knows every, I know statistic is, every one manufacturing job creates seven other jobs, which is nice, we can do that. So that's kind of like an overview of what we'd like to do. I just want to get a gut feel if you think this is something that would be plausible, accepted, and again, looking, Mr. Chairman, this is some guidance, you know, not any, nothing's binding, we're not looking for any, this is, we'll come back and present. I think we have to go to the zoning board to ask some of the questions I wanted to make you aware of. And just wanted to see if you think this is something that would appeal to you.
Well, thank you very much, yeah. I think there, this property has been idle for way too long. This is a, kind of, an area of our community that is set up for commercial. We have the commercial, you know, zoning all along Route Four, and that's what our master plan in zoning was set up for it to be. Some of that has switched over to residential, so there is some residential that used to be in commercial, so that had been dwindling, which we didn't like to see. We would like to see more commercial businesses, you know, like, like this would have. So I do encourage you to continue on that, and this is all my real opinion. But the commercial zone there is set up just along Route Four.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason why there's residential behind it is that most of the commercial, when the zones were set up, was, that thought there is just a frontage to Route Four, and that things out in the backside of that, the parcels would be so large that, you know, they wouldn't be used for some of that, that stuff. So the, the planning may not have been thoughtful enough to have these bigger parcels be all commercial, but I think that I would, I would encourage you to have them all as commercial, because as you say, it's not, some of that developable area in the back is a lot of wetland, and then having residences go through a commercial property to get there is not desirable.
Correct.
And I think, yeah, though, the setbacks, what some of, most of those are doing is protecting the industrial uses or manufacturing uses from residential uses. So those are usually abutting, you know, where residents will be. But I, I think this is a great idea. I would encourage it, and I'd like to hear from anyone else in the board that would have input.
Just one point of clarification. So that, that was identified in our, by us as a board recently, or a year or so ago, that we have split zoning, which is not a great thing for planning purposes, but we haven't gotten to a point of addressing it as of yet, basically because it's probably affecting so few parcels. But we did commit as a board, and then as a town, with a town vote, to make, to remove residential from the commercial agricultural, commercial industrial district, to try to preserve what the remaining space on Route Four for commercial use and industrial use, as being the most fitting in our town for where that would be seen. Couple of points, so is, with some of the lines that are shown here, are you proposing, or are you, are you thinking you're gonna do a subdivision and create like seven separate lots on there?
Yes.
Or is it gonna be that it's an industrial park, and these are all buildings within one lot, or you, that are gonna be leased out separately, or are you looking at that?
What did you say, Danny?
Yeah, that, that was our concept. We did have a concept showing, just which I'm talking about, like a condominium-type project, where there would be an access drive and buildings off of it to do that kind of thing. And it became a little difficult to process that, we're talking about permitting, how do you permit something we don't know we're gonna have for use yet. So now the concept is, if we build a road, then we can have lots, and then someone comes in, wants fifty thousand square feet versus someone wants to come in twelve thousand square feet, or even a hundred thousand square foot building. And so if we put in, we don't know this in advance, so, but we could build the infrastructure of the road, and that would also attract people to come. Then we can also alter the lot lines at a later date to make, accommodate anybody that would have, they say, buy one lot or two lots, or then we resubdivide the lots themselves, but the infrastructure would all be there for the road. And each lot would then come in for a site plan review for the building itself and its use, and its, all the things that go along with whatever type of use there is there. Right now, the thing about it is, right now, there's no way for us to design this entire site, like you show yet, like I show, but all of the uses, now, we don't even know what the use is gonna be, so how do you prepare a site plan? So that's why we're trying to do it as a subdivision type of event, where then we can come in and get individual lots approved, depending on its use and its size of its building, and all those things that go along with that. So a very specific design for that, very specific use. So that's, that's the concept we have here. Now, one of the things that we're looking for, like Tom was talking about, the setbacks from, you know, frontage on a road is a hundred and fifty feet. That's a lot, that's a lot of open land that's not being used productively, in my, my mind. So that's what we're looking for relief. Of course, you can't grant that, that would have to be the zoning board that would grant that kind of relief. So my question would be, what's the procedure for getting that done? You know, obviously, I can't say obviously, but does the zoning board need an approved subdivision before they can issue any kind of, most like a, I'd say a blanket variance, but something that would give him relief, give him assurance that something like that might happen? Because if it doesn't happen, you know, we can't build what we're showing here. And then it would really restrict the amount of lots that would go there, and it would, it'd probably cut it almost in half.
Yeah. When you spend a million dollars to put a road in and a water system, yeah, look at the economics to make sure it can work.
Yeah.
To Denny's point, if you looked at, I think it's lots four, five, and six, then the other water, you pointed out, Denny, in particular. I got a call today from my broker two weeks, two, three hours before, five o'clock, that he may have had somebody in Manchester, had to be thirty miles from Manchester, to be in some certain zone, ended up being twenty-eight, so it's on the shortlist, and they might be looking to do eighty to a hundred thousand square feet of light manufacturing, which would. and it being 28, so it's on the shortlist, and they might be looking to do 80,000 to 100,000 square feet of light manufacturing, which would be great. But, you know, so what we were, Danny and I were talking on the way over, that maybe what you could do is take two of those lots, combine them and put a, you know, come to you and say, "Look, we'd like to put this building on, what do you think?" So we can entice them to maybe consider coming here, and we're on a shortlist of that. Um, you know, and this is something would be built in 2023, I believe, is what they're looking. And I haven't, I've done this long enough, I haven't, I, I can tell you, if I can do something like this, it can be very, very successful. I've just done it a lot. I've spent 30, 35 years doing this, and I have a great reputation in the town of Hampton, I bring in good businesses. All my properties I own, they are absolutely pristine. I build nothing but quality. I'm not a, I'm not saying you, Dennis, I'm not someone from New York that's coming in, develop and leave. I usually do a lot of hold, too. I'll build and rent, and I'll hold it, and I'll maintain it. And it doesn't mean that I wouldn't sell it if it made sense for everybody. But I'm a very responsible developer, and I've had the great success doing it over the years.
So I'd like to, to definitely encourage you in this direction, too, and, uh, I don't know for, I don't know, this is a question in my mind, is
Sure.
whether zoning will do like we're doing now.
Sure.
Conceptual for that, mate. I don't know if that's ever, ever been done, but that's just a thought I had.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing I, I was thinking, you know, when you were talking about the, the clear span building.
Yes.
And the height constraints and that, um, so that's really, those constraints are really around being able to address a fire. And so there are ways around that. So I really think that there would be a way to, to
Yeah.
get around that issue.
Yeah. I mean, you know, if you think about distribution houses, it's traffic, you've got to balance all of it out. You know, you go get Amazon, Walmart, I don't think, you know, they want, they all want 40-foot high. I know my friends do this in Nashua, and they're building 40-foot high because of all, it's less, you know, less, you get more cube space for your money, if you will. So that's one of the restrictions, but it could be, like, we have one place in Boston, this building would be perfect where they do long-term storage. Uh, for example, like if you work for Fidelity, and they take all your furniture, put it away for two or three years, you know, there's going to be 10 people in the warehouse and not many trucks going in and out, which is a great low-impact use, good tax base. Gourmet gift baskets, Ryan Abboud, friend of mine, owns, uh, if you've heard of Gourmet Gift Basket, they're in Exeter. I've been talking about Ryan to consider coming up here, but again, he's into the cube space, and it's that 40-foot high. Uh, the guy, Procon Construction, good friend of mine, unfortunately Mark passed away, the owner, but I know a lot of the family, and he talked about raising the roof, and I actually talked to him. He said, "Well, what about if we could raise the roof?" He says, "Forget it." My friend Paul Roy works there. Calls me back two days later, "I found somebody, I think that we can do this, a company out of Toronto, that actually raises this roof, which I thought is fascinating technology. They would do it in four sections, so, but it costs a lot of money, but I think it can be economical." So again, I have a lot of contacts, I think I could help the town, and everybody, we could get a win-win here, and it would be a nice little business park. This is my opinion.
So a couple of other things, I'm sure, you know, this is part of the history of the parcel, I don't know at all, having lived in here 11 years, uh, but I believe, looking at maps, there's a cemetery on the lot, uh, to the west, and a lot to the east, so, lot, I can't remember the numbers.
Yeah. I think it's behind the big building.
I'm not certain where they are, so I don't know how clearly, clear they are, or whatever, but our, our historic commission might be.
That is a cemetery there.
Thank you.
That was preserved when we did the water bottle facility.
And there's another one, apparently somewhere on the other lot, too.
Yeah, I've walked that whole site, and I didn't see one, but, doesn't mean it's not there, it's been so big it is.
Yeah, like I said, that's, um, we can reach out to, we have a few people in town that are pretty good with the, the history of it and may know, because again, some of these are shown on the map, but who knows what the condition is.
We're also aware that there is a cell tower on this property as well.
Yep. And then, uh, and then
Some things with it, and that's, our access drive actually follows where they're underground, cables go up to the, up to the tower. There's an existing gravel drive that's there, so we've mimicked that to try and, because we can't move that, that, that's, that's, it's not permanent, we could move it, but they get a requirement of not being able to disrupt their, their operations, so tremendous amount of money would be spent trying to move that, so we'd obviously keep that in mind.
And then the other part is, there's a, there may be a history of, of a contaminant, um, part of where the partially constructed building is. I don't know if that was ever addressed, it's still showing.
That was, that was during the process, prior to us getting the permits for this, there was a contamination removal process, and it lasted several months, that they actually excavated out thousands of yards of material, cleaned it, and then reinstalled it and tested. I believe it got a clean slate, because I wouldn't have given us a permit without it, a water bottle facility, obviously. So that was all part of that.
And then I don't know if some of the wetlands that are in the front, I believe, were, may have had DES permits that weren't complied with, um, so there may be some stuff that comes from DES on that, you know, if, if a new site plan came through.
That was going to be one of my, one of my concerns with Tom and everybody here, too, is, is, you know, obviously this was permitted, and it had an AOT permit, all those things, but the rules have changed in the past 15 years as well. So I don't know how that's going to play into this, because the, a lot of the infrastructure for the stormwater was constructed when they, when they built this. There's a 60,000 square foot stormwater basin just to the right of the main building that is constructed and operational. They have, um, some capations and manholes and the, it's all gravel now, it's not, had never got paved, but that whole area with the, some of the infrastructure was installed. There was some wetlands that were filled to create the building, and there was a big replication area that was created. I mean, all these things were done. So the question is, how are those permits rated now? We get the permits to do it, uh, but obviously all the permits have expired. So I'm not sure how that's going to play into it, because also part of the permits was a bunch of requirements of, you know, with the conservation commission and just conservation in general, some, some easements were granted, and some areas for turtle habitat were created, and all these kind of things. I don't know how those relate now to whatever we do going forward. So those will have to be looked at at a legal standpoint.
And the driveway permits, too?
We had, Matt, we had Nehafta DOT driveway, probably the one for this, for the water bottle facility. But we'd obviously need another one for that over there, and if this use changes from that, then, then DOT is not going to, well, good, obviously.
You had mentioned water system, so are you, you're looking, are you looking at separate septic and water systems for each building, or are you looking at a kind of a?
But that concept right is now, this, this building will be separate, be on its own, this building area will be on its own, have its own septic building, and potentially well. Right now, this one does have a well and a septic system on it. This one has a partial septic system with a design that they're finished. But it obviously has these production wells that were going to be for the water bottle facility are still there. Those were all tested for their volumes and stuff, and there's actually a well in the ground, but they're not hooked up to anything. Tom was mentioning that you're going to need a sprinkler system for this building, and some of these buildings are over 12,000 square feet, they're also going to have to be sprinkled. So the thought was, maybe one of these production wells could turn into the water supply for the whole development. Now, for the sprinkler systems, obviously that doesn't draw a lot of water, although the initial water would fill the cistern, and then it just has to maintain that water flow, so if there's no fire, there's no use in the water, other than domestically, which would be very low for commercial uses and, and things. You'd never use a high-water use, because then there'd be a huge septic system. So each one of these lots would have their own leak chamber, individually, so that, that owner would be responsible for his own thing, and not, not a communal thing, but the well would be a communal. If we get the water there, why drill wells all over the place when we get the water in there, that can use that kind of water? So that's our concept now, and, uh, I think it's a great one, and this would be very nice. And the way it's set up, we love them, and this little chunk right here is a large chunk of lead that sticks up 20, 27 feet of a property, so it's kind of like a restraining piece for us, too. So we're not using a lot of the frontage, you won't see much from the road. Got two smaller buildings right here that are 150 feet back from the four, meaning the setback requirement, but the rest of it's in back, and so this is going to be the total of the community.
Yeah, I think that, going back to that, that zoning and the setbacks is that maybe there's a discussion that could be had about, you know, the internal roadway network. Um, the buffers for that or the setbacks for that are different.
That's all we'd be looking for, not from Route Four. Yeah, just to keep it away from the general public, and only people that would be in there, the people that would be using, you know, the, the business owners and whatever is using in there.
And I think it would be good, and, you know, the way it's drawn right now, it, probably, probably, but to create a, a nice buffer between, uh, the Lincoln Drive, uh, folks and, and your property, so that, I mean, because that's residential, that's been there for a long, long time, and
There's a lot of land there and a lot of trees, it's very well, you can see how far back it's set back.
Yeah.
Really is quite, you know, there's a good buffer there, to your point, Shirley.
Yeah, then, then obviously, it sounds like you've already identified it. So I, I believe these are classified as the critical wetlands, like, the system, you know, they're pretty extensive in this area and into Barrington. So there's additional, you know, the buffers, a bit more restrictive in that area, and then last year with the zoning, there was, or this year, there were some additional items adopted in, like vernal pool production and buffers and, uh, and stream production. I don't know if any of these are considered streams, or if they flow, or if it's just a wetland.
These wetlands don't really have any streams associated with it. It drains in that, in one direction, but there's no real stream channel, so to speak, of that. You know, this, this is a, a wetland area, very sensitive wetland area, that they get a huge beaver dam that's been there for quite some time. This, this is all backup, this all flows in this, this direction, but this is another beaver dam over here, Barrington area. There were a couple of, a vernal pool identified, and that's right here. This actually has a ring of stones around it to protect it from vehicles, anything in, in the area. It's all wooded anyways, but they did require us when we were there, we put a ring 25 feet away from this, and stones, just so no vehicle, people come in there, it's not going to block any of this thing. There is a potential vernal pool here, and we actually have a, never built it, but that was a pole vernal pool, or something creative vernal pool in that area there as well. And it was an easement, that's what that shaded area was, that was a degree of fine easement, conservation easement, so nothing ever happens in that, that's true.
Okay.
I don't know what the validity of that now, that all the permits are gone, is that, you know, still there or not, I don't know.
I, I do recall when, when the, the water bottling plant, uh, was proposed, and the DOT permit did limit the amount of trucks
Yes.
going into, um, the site.
DOT didn't limit it, the planning board did.
Okay, the planning board, okay.
I think it was 60, 60 vehicles, uh, trucks, tractor trailers.
Tractor trailers, yeah.
So there was a, that's why this, this area here has a lot of storage here, so they would actually store the trucks there until they were all ready to go, and then they, they wouldn't be running. They also limited the times when they could run. You know, so they wouldn't, wouldn't run them overnight to get, you know, residential, but it's when they fire up the, the trucks and run them up there overnight, they would wake people up, but. So there, there were a lot of restrictions for the traffic for that, because, you know, with substantial traffic, 60, 60 trailers, it seems like a lot, but when you, when you sit there and think about 60 trucks, you know, that's 10 an hour, you know, in a period of time, so.
But that's not what this is.
No, we don't know what the use is going to be.
Right, we don't know what the use is going to be in that kind of, so, so one of my concerns is, or not a concern, but one of the things that I think that we would need to consider is whether or not, um, we require, because not knowing that, that are, from what it sounds like, these, these are going to be, we're going to do this here, maybe come back in a couple of years, do this here, do this here, so, you know, understand that, you know, you don't have the crystal ball and can't predict the, the big picture of it. But, um, knowing that this site was contaminated, and depending upon how much water actually comes out of this site, um, I can only describe it as the way that, uh, it would be described, is that once, once the water starts getting pulled, there's a big sucking straw that then starts to move the, the contaminants that are under the ground. And so I think it would be in our interest for, uh, for individuals, you know, that we do require some kind of, uh, water study on whatever happens on this site.
Shirley, thank you. The contaminants have been removed, like you told, they took a lot of contaminants out of it, they would not be a really high-water use, so I can clarify for you. Once you fill up the cisterns for the fire protection, you're done. You're not sucking any more water out of it. They had one at 350 gallons a minute, it was incredible amount of water, it never dropped, and he said, "We hadn't done this for about three months," so we've then had many meetings and gone through this, so we're pretty well robust, with all due respect, about like some of the dynamics, and I agree with you. If we're going to be sucking a lot of water, you got to check it out. But Denny, who has a lot of history with the site, now, like, tens of thousands of yards are taken out. It was cleaned up, because if they were going to do the bottling there, they, you don't want to have them in the water. So really, it's just going to be domestic uses for toilets, sinks, and that's it. So you're really not going to have that sucking sound that you, you referred to.
Right.
This development wouldn't be that. It's just going to be for basic, uh, you know, domestic use, and that's it. Other than you'd have the, I got to be frank, you'd have these maybe two cisterns, maybe 20, 30,000 gallons, ready to go with a generator to pump water in the case of a fire. And that's, you'd use it, it would be over, you'd refill it, and it'd be the end of it. So just to clarify it.
And most likely, if it's a, if it's a community well, it would fall under additional state testing standards for annual
Of course, yes, of course, yeah.
For that size well.
Yeah.
That size.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure all of you are aware that they did do a 10-day pump test at full, full velocity of this thing, you know, during, to get their permits from the state for the water bottle facility. That would be, that'd be 50 times more than what you're going to use for here.
I understand that, I thought those never, they never finished it, I thought they had to shut it down before the
No, they did, they did a 10-day pump test, that's what we did that. That was all caught up, and then they had monitored, I don't know, the residential wells, I think there was 20 or 30 different homes that had actually monitors in their wells while they were doing this. And all the wells dropped to a certain point, and then stopped, and then, you know, they maintained that, that level. And they had monitors in the pond out here, they had monitors miles away as well, you know, they, they had it pretty good, and it's all done with hydrogeologists that put, you know, following the aquifers at the lower ground, and knew where the water was coming from and going to. All that was, that's really nothing to do with what we're trying to do here.
We think this is a good responsible plan, I think it's a good mix of open space, and, you know, something that we would, would work economically, and I think it could be a good impact, so we certainly appreciate your input. I think we have some zoning issues to co, to cover, but I think a lot of it falls, a lot of common sense. Uh, and I think if everybody's reasonable, this could be a, a nice win for everybody.
And then, so with some of these, too, the way our zoning is written, or, so, a couple of things to keep in mind, too, uh, is usually contiguous area, so there's contiguous buildable area uplands. So, you know, that, that might affect buffers and setbacks and such. There was mention about possibly, like, you know, coming to the board with one subdivision plan, and then, you know, lay it out in a certain way, and realizing, okay, we may have to amend it later on. I, I believe merging or lot line adjustments are fine, but a re-subdivision gets locked for four years under our current subdivision regulations, so.
Say that one more time?
Our current, so if you were talking about potentially re-subdividing, like, to create like a, a different plan for, for, you know, you found someone that says, "Yes, I want this, but I need this and this and this." So we need that lot and most of that lot. Re-subdiving, we lock for four years, but lot line adjustments, we've allowed after, you know, in between that.
Okay.
So say you, you come before, you get a subdivision approved between building four and five, and then you realize, okay, well, building four is actually going to be 20,000 square feet, building five is going to be 40,000, we need to do a lot line adjustment to make up for that, to get the bigger footprint.
Yeah, that, that's what we'd be doing, potentially combining a couple of lots if it's a big enough user, just taking a lot line out.
And one thing I, I liked on this, without walking the site and getting a better idea, you know, you drive by it, but again, it's pretty wooded and
You can see it.
in certain condition at the moment right now, is I like the two very distinguished, you know, entrances on Route Four. And, uh, you know, for me, I'd, I'd look at possibly having a consideration put in if, if this was like phased, that is the final phase, that possibly that middle, uh, driveway would go away, and the access would be the two, the two driveways, that way you don't have these three curb cuts on Route Four. Especially where that's only a 30 or 35-foot, uh,
Yeah, it's very narrow.
It's pretty narrow for, for, if, if, depending on what kind of vehicles are coming in.
For the proposed use, you know, we're talking very little traffic, not a lot of, not like tractor trailers coming and going.
And one lot, which I, I would recommend, I mean, I'm going to just speak in favor, the gentleman coming before me, I think it'd be a good use, it'd be a good start to get somebody in there. It's low-impact, it's woodworking, and trying, selling truck bedliners. I've known Austin for years, he's a good man, and I think he'd do a good job, they're very responsible. But I'll let you hear him, and you can judge for yourself, obviously.
Yeah.
But I'd be in favor of that, obviously, is my.
And also, as you can see on the plan, I think it was already mentioned, that we are trying to interconnect these, so that another way out from any one of these buildings, in case there was an error or problem in one of the structures, gives them another way in and out. Not necessarily meant to be a flow-through, but meant to be just as an emergency kind of thing, interconnection, and with that lot, we're just discussing, could get the access from the main road, and wouldn't have to use this little access onto, onto the floor.
Probably put up a crash gate, we talked about, or something like that, for an emergency.
On the new road, so he could just build another driveway off of that, and the rest is trying to use his little frontage.
Mr. Moulton, I have a question.
Sure.
What is the rationale for selling these lots rather than leasing them? They'll lease to be renewable every 50 years or so. If, my to be renewable every 50 years or so. If, my feeling is that if you sell all these lots, then you're out of here. And who maintains the infrastructure, like the roads, the wells, the septics? Will it be a homeowners association?
No, it would be the town would pile the road. We look to be a town road going in, so the town would maintain the road. And you're going to get taxes from that. Each individual lot would have to maintain its septic. The well system would be part of a community well, which everybody that would use it would have to contribute to maintaining that. And frankly, if you knew my history, I keep using a lot of the stuff that I build, because it's a tax thing. When you sell something, the government has their hands in your pockets, and it's more of an incentive to keep it over the long run. My kids will end up getting the benefit. I'll be long gone. But, yeah, point is, but there might be a couple of lots that some customer may want to own. And, you know, I can certainly use that as a consideration, that maybe if I do sell it, that helps me fund the road economically.
So, um, what would happen to the conservation land out back? Would that be an easement given to Selt to protect the turtle habitat and?
Yeah, there's been some talk. Dwayne is supposed to call me. They walked it October 8th. I'm waiting to get back from him. We talked in April, when I got it under agreement with, with the town. They came out and said they were interested in maybe purchasing some land.
Oh, good.
Because there's a high value water, you know, water in the back. And I said, sure. I said, we're not going to build there, and if I can make it work for everybody, I'm happy to, to accommodate. You know, so I, I think that's going to be a, a possibility. A lot of it in the back is going to be protected. You're not even going near there, so.
There is a substantial chunk of upland, though, on the other side of that pond, but there's no way for us to get to it. But for conservation, it'd be great. Maybe someone could build a little footbridge to get over there.
Well, there's a giant easement that, that abuts, right in, right in Barrington. I think it's several thousand acres.
Yes, yeah. He talked about that. And this was kind of a high value to him because it abuts it. So
Yes.
There's a natural thing for us to have, like to talk about it, and I'm very open to that.
Yeah.
Which is fine. But I'm not going anywhere. I'm, I'll be around, don't worry.
All right.
So one thing, I still want you to go away with on this perception. So my understanding of, so we can't, we can't accept roads for the town, as this board.
Yep.
So they're private roads until they become a warrant article that goes before the town.
Yep, understood.
There's a process for that. Usually it's asked to be petitioned by a number of residents, but I could be mistaken on the whole part of how a road becomes accepted by the town. And in the past, on some other applications, you know, we're leery of being the type of town that we are, small town, of accepting pretty complex infrastructure. So if it's, you know, like, that could be the, the drainage systems and things like that. Some of those are becoming pretty complex. They're not just a swale anymore and whatever else they may have, you know, pretty intricate systems that have to be maintained every year. So they, we've, in other cases, we've had that be a part of, basically like an association that gets created that's responsible for maintaining, paying for maintaining that. Not saying that's, that's how it has to be, but just to give you an idea of some of the stuff that's happened in the, in the past.
Yeah, like our public works department does not clean out catch basins.
Sure.
We don't have any catch basins. With the backhoe, they will clean out some culverts.
Sure. Well, as a responsible homeowner, business owner, you'd look, you'd maintain your property. Certainly you'd want the water overboard. If you got to get there and clean it out, you'd have a landscaper or somebody to maintain the property.
I'm definitely a proponent of making things maintenance-free as possible. Obviously, everything requires maintenance, but generally, stuff is very easy to see and easy to fix, such as an open basin versus a subsurface basin. Some of the treatment systems, we have to do now just to comply with the AOT permits and things like that, but can get a little complicated. And those kind of items could be part of the association here to maintain versus the town. Specifically, just looking forward, just having the town a path to follow the road. I don't know, you know, obviously, they got piles so that they do that, without getting involved with some of the stormwater maintenance stuff.
But the, the good thing is, it looks like, for the most part, is this is laid out, I get, this is just paper and pen, for the most part, is you're avoiding this residential area. There's one residential section here, which it looks like is pretty much avoided. And then, so, so you're avoiding, you know, most of the, you'd be respectful of the, or as much as possible, of setbacks there and, and obviously residential, commercial, those would be the biggest two conflicts versus, you know, industrial.
Bless, bless him for that. Does that give you guys enough?
Yeah, I think that's, I really appreciate everybody's input. It's, appreciate it very much. Gives us some guidance if we start spending money in engineering. At least we know that it's somewhat favorable. We have some work to do. You know, with zoning, we're going to need some of that relief. It doesn't have to be a zoning change, just some, some relief or variance, if we can get that. Will it be the next process go before the zoning board to talk about this, or will we come into the planning board for our official read and, and then go back to zoning? I'm just wondering how, if I go left or go right?
Right.
Any guidance there?
I don't think zoning, so zoning, I don't think has a conceptual process at all.
Okay.
I don't know if they have
They don't. They're, they're more black and white.
Okay.
So it's either yes or no. What, what I would recommend is, is scheduling an appointment with planning, and then maybe we can have a, a meeting to just kind of go over some of the elements on it. So staff, like a staff meeting.
Sure.
With the planning department.
Yeah.
And, you know, help you out with a little bit of guidance, a little bit more
What steps to go, trying to get where we want to go. Okay, that'd be good. And I'll call Chris. Was it Chris Sternfield, or who did I?
Yeah, just, just, call Kevin.
Oh, call Kevin.
Yeah, he's, he's the land use clerk.
Okay, great.
So go through Kevin on that and set up a meeting, and we'll try and get to a point where you can make an application.
Okay, and get a pathway there. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. And Austin will be up next. I hope you can support his effort, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up then is application from Nottingham Business Park LLC.
I'll give you a call.
Requesting site plan approval for a change of use to allow a truck bed company and woodworking business to operate out of two of the three buildings. Property's located at 155 Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, identified as map three, lot nine. I didn't read the case number, but it's 21015-sit. And is the applicant here in the
Yeah, great. Dirk, just wanted to let you know that I'm not on the butter to the spot, so.
Technicality.
Welcome back. Did you have a good break?
I did. It was nice having that perspective.
You got any good criticism about the board you want to share from?
I like Charlene's mention of my streaks, so that's all I needed.
Again, welcome. If you could just maybe go through the idea of your application and what the use would be and
Scott Frankos from New Hampshire Land Consultants here with Austin Roberts, who'll be the, the business owner there. Mr. Moulton is still on the property, but Austin will run the businesses out of there. As you said, the tax map three, lot nine. It's a 13.47 acre parcel with that 33 feet of frontage, which you guys are talking about on Route 4. Currently, there's three, three vacant buildings. A larger building back here, a smaller building that's not connected but pretty close. And then there's a, a steel structure here with a, with a wood frame structure that's falling apart on the front of that one. There's a frame dispensing around it right now to protect anybody or any animals getting in there. What Austin is proposing is building one, and I'll start with building one, which is the lower building. Building two is the next larger building, and then building three is the largest one. Building one, he doesn't plan on anything at this time, but he plans on hopefully renovating the, the building for some use in the future. Building two, which is a 30 by 80 steel structure, and I believe we submitted pictures of the outside and the insides of these buildings. And Austin can talk more about those once we get further into the presentation. So the building two will be an East Coast Truck Bed sales. It's a low-volume business. He expects five customers a week, probably one worker in the building that, at the time, servicing the customers coming in. Hours of operation will be eight to five, Monday through Friday. Building number three, which is the larger building, is a Oak and Mill Woodworks, design and fabrication of custom cabinetry. The building's 160 by 50 feet long, open span inside. There's a couple little aspects of the building, has some loading ramps and stuff. In addition to that, he's proposing two storage trailers, which are shown to the, to the west of that building on the outside, just would store some lumber and stuff probably. Again, this one will have about five to six workers, low volume, hours eight to five business, Monday through Friday. We are asking for a couple waivers on the application, seeing this is an existing site. We're not proposing any, any new structures, parking lots, anything. We're asking for waivers from articles eight point three and eight point four, as also mentioned in eight point five, where that, that could be availability to the board to waive, when we're not doing any improvements to the site, other than improving the buildings. And if you have any questions for myself or Austin about his business, we can answer them.
Thank you. First, I want to turn to Blair to see, you've reviewed the application itself, and you could provide a little bit of a summary from your review?
Uh, yeah. Scott did a pretty good job of patching in that I had read and understood the proposal being. There, all the work seems to be interior, or to the building, I should say to the structures. The site work is limited to nonexistent. I did read in, in the documents that there would be some brush bearings. I'm sure it's overgrown, just given the state of it for a long period of time. There was no mention of anything beyond that. So it does seem like it's, according to what they're proposing, entirely contained to the structures themselves. They are asking for two, well, what I have is waivers for eight point three, eight point four. Scott just mentioned eight point five, but it's understandable because the site is existing. It is going from vacant to occupied with the use that is allowed. It's not a change of use from, say something that was not conforming. So it's, it's current use is considered as usual. I did put a couple of thoughts into the comments section that, a question about will they have to, do they have any permits related to access to Route 4 in the state that might, might need to be modified, that we should just be aware of. Then I did think about security, exterior lighting or security lighting, if they have like a perimeter fence or anything like that, because it is a residential property towards the front. I can see now that it's
You can see it on the map.
Yeah, and it's pretty substantially wooded between the two of them. Again, it's just always something to think about. Because beyond that, there really wasn't much they were doing that would be, or at least that they're proposing that be of great concern for the, I don't want to minimize anyone's concern, but like, it doesn't seem like there is any of great concern besides those couple of things. And I would just make the mention that if you do approve it, whether it's mine or another, that it's for just the first two buildings, and that if there's a third use proposed for the
Front building.
Existing building number one, that it'd be clear in your approval that, you know, what you're approving is the first two buildings. So, yeah. It was pointed out to me that I had made mention of this plan being accepted, accepted on the 22nd. I, I don't know, I understood that to mean when Kevin accepted it, not this board, but I'll be sure, be more than I will that next time, so.
It was received, yeah.
Yeah, received, accepted it. Because it said complete this, so I just, I don't know, tease that out in my own head. Anyways.
So, great, thanks. So good, that is kind of the, other than getting kind of the summary and overview and review, once that application's in, the board is required to accept the application. So that is one of our kind of gateways to getting it into the planning review process. So before we really go into any details from the board's side of things on this specific application, I guess I would just ask, you know, do you feel that it's complete, the application information?
Yes, they requested the waivers that they would need. So yes, are we considered to be complete and something the board could accept?
Right, right. So I would entertain a motion, we accept this application.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the application for case 21-015-sit as complete.
Second. Motion is second by Gary. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. So now that it's been accepted, we can discuss the merits of the application.
Want your regional impact out of it?
Yes, I just get it out of the way, yeah.
Yes. I'll make a motion that this is not an application of regional impact.
A second.
I don't want to miss it.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Those voting in favor that it is not a regional impact?
Yes.
Indicate aye.
Aye.
Those, okay, so that was unanimous. So every, every application, we have to vote whether the board feels it is a regional impact that the application would have. And in this case, we do not feel that way. Now we can go on to the rest of the merits of the application. And Blair, thank you for that kind of summary of this. I guess I would bring it back to the board. If there are some discussions, we would have to act on waivers if it was going to move forward. Do we have the information and do we have it in enough detail to act on this, this evening? Do we want to look at this more in detail?
So the, the waivers, is it for all of section eight point three and eight point four?
That was the way it was worded, yeah.
Yes.
I had a couple things. I just wanted to, some questions that might, I guess, develop the conversation, if you don't mind if I just
Sure.
Go through those. So I had a couple. First, I think until the brush was cleared recently, I live up half a mile down the road and I've never seen that driveway, so.
It looks, I mean, I've spent, I've spent a drastic amount of time in there.
Yeah.
I brought a mini excavator that I own, a skid steer. I've spent Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday in there after working a week in Boston and cleaned it up. It looks drastically different. I've cleaned out all of the junk that people left inside the buildings. The big building, which, as Scott proposed, I'm, that's, that would, I would like to use that for my woodworking company. That building has been completely cleaned out, broom swept. I've got the power turned back on to it. Lights are functioning. It's secured. Garage doors are now operable, which they were not previously.
Yeah.
You can drive around the entire building. I mean, I've spent a lot of time there just myself. The second building, which I own another company called East Coast Truck Beds, I buy and resell rust-free truck beds from Texas. I got out of Texas, I load them on an 18-wheeler, I bring them back here, or I have somebody transport them back here, and I resell them. I don't do bodywork, I don't do
So that was my next, that was my next question.
Yeah.
So there's not any sort of
There's no
Treatment. It's really just a resale point.
There's nothing. I just, if, if I buy this in Texas, I bring it back and I sell it in New Hampshire because there's no rust on it.
Gotcha. And that's what helped me. And that's kind of, you know, my first question was going to be the width of that driveway. I think based on the anticipated employee levels, the, the low customer numbers, I don't have a ton of concern. It looks like it's in the 18 to 20-foot mixed pavement use.
That's about 20, it's about 20 feet right now. Yep. But I mean, it wasn't when, until the brush had been cleaned out.
I think, you know, you know, mention of like a tractor trailer, because it sounds like it's super infrequent. It looks like a truck, it looks like a truck can get in there.
Absolutely. I've already had an 18-wheeler drop my excavator in there. When he, was he, he's like, I can't, because he actually picked up the rock crusher from when the housing plant had ended. It was the same guy. He's like, I can't believe how it, like, the difference it is now versus what it was previously. I mean, we
Yeah, luckily Route 4 is wide enough there, too, so.
Yeah.
And that kind of leads me into, to stay on the driveway thing. Has it been determined that DOT has to be contacted for amendment to use or anything?
We haven't.
Okay. I just know if it's going to be a commercial use, they're probably going to want a stop sign there. That's a pretty minor thing, but I just know it's always what they asked me for. And then my, I also had written down lighting. Is it just going to be more security lighting, since you said eight to five is your
Yeah, so I have, I have lighting that I've already talked to, the electrician that has already come in and done the work. We have a building permit for that, to do the electrical work and to turn it on. I mean, I need to put lighting on the outside I mean, I need to put lighting on the outside of my building, so secure. I've got cameras that I want to put up. I've actually befriended the neighbor in front. JJ's actually a really nice guy. He called me this week and he goes, are you up there? And I'm like, I'm not. I'm up in Maine with my grandfather. And he's like, oh, I hear beeping. So he went up and somebody was dropping off a piece of equipment. And I was like, nope, that's him. He goes, okay, just making sure nobody's up there messing around.
If being off the roadway, I know it's more so for you. It's a, we look at that and see a security concern.
Yeah, I mean, that was the first thing we did. I had to, I came in, I got brand-new doors on, on the big building that were not, I mean, they were just not there. I secured it. All the windows were broken out in the building. I pulled all the sashes off, brought them back to my shop in Boston, fixed them and brought them back. And now the building is, the building is completely secure as of right now.
All right. And then I think, I think the last thing I had was outdoor storage. So like you said, you're bringing these things in, the reselling.
Those are inside.
So everything is inside? That was a question.
Yep. So all my truck beds, I have pallets that are on casters and I double stack beds. I bring them there, that small building, the forty by eighty, it's concrete. We've taken down the wall in the middle, which was just a plywood barrier, yeah. And they just, they all stay inside. They move. I've got a forklift. I keep my beds inside under, you know, behind the garage doors.
Good. Yeah, that was my only concern was any outdoor storage, you know, observing certain setbacks, stuff like that, but it sounds like that's taken care of.
And I think the only other thing, the outdoor storage that Scott had mentioned, I have a couple of storage containers. I mean, I'm a general contractor and a woodworker, so we build all our own custom kitchen cabinets, built-ins, entry doors. I've actually got to look at a job for the town, for you guys' kitchen when they've mentioned it to me, so.
And it looks like those do, those would be qualified, I believe, as an accessory structure, which looks like they would satisfy any sort of, or they'd be required to satisfy a twenty-foot setback, but it looks like that's going there. So that's not an issue. All right. That's all I got, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have anything?
One question I have is, I mean, just because the buildings have been vacant for so long, is kind of the condition of the plumbing in the septic systems, has that been evaluated yet?
The septic system, septic system is there. The plumbing was ripped out from whoever, they just kind of went in and just decided to rip out a bunch of stuff. I've got, I just, I need to get a plumber in there to set, so I have water and I can use it for my sink, for the guys that work at the shop. I do have a porta potty that I've dropped there now, just because I haven't set it up yet, but.
And there is an onsite, onsite well?
Yep.
For that, for that lot. So, and I know Ian and Brent mentioned the lighting, so usually, I think we have it in our zoning, but lighting is usually, exterior lighting, we understand that it's needed to protect and secure items, but in our master plan, you know, dark skies are mentioned and things like that. So it's usually make sure it's downlighting, you know, protected, shielded, so it's not, you know, just those big halogen lights that blast.
Floodlights.
Floodlights that go.
Yeah, and they're just, they're on the corners of, on the big building, they're on the two front corners. And then on the corner of the smaller building, and then one overlooking both of the long sides, and then two on the very back.
Okay.
So we don't show like any, on the plan, we're not, there's no like actual driveway showing or parking or anything like that for?
Well, the driveway is.
This is the current driveway right now, which you can't see, but that's been cleaned out. You can actually, the rock walls, upstairs, the rock wall, clean that out. The parking is all existing here. Now you can drive around the entire building. All of this undergrowth here has been completely cleaned out. It's, I've got it all mulched it back to the dirt that was there.
So but no proposal like increasing any, you know, pavement areas or anything like that? Or it's, the paved area is kind of between the paved building and then these other two structures, is that right?
Correct. Yeah, the paved area comes off of Route four and goes up to, just in front of the dilapidated building, right? Yep.
And the rest is gravel, right?
The rest is gravel. Yep.
So we feel comfortable to act on the waiver?
Well, there's some things that, that's what I was trying to read, section eight point three, eight point four, that I think are captured on the plan. So if we waive it, I think we're okay. Location of site, name and address of current owners of record and current abutting landowners. Proposed project name, name and address of firm preparing the data, information different, on the prepared map. I don't know if we should waive the whole section or just pieces of it?
I'm kind of leaning towards, I think we should see where the septic are on the plan, since we don't have any of that information.
Or even approximate location? What's the, when were these built? I guess that was one thing. What was the original intent of these structures? Was associated with?
They spooled wire in the building.
Yeah.
It's in a folder in the building department.
From the seventies?
Oh, so, okay.
Usually what we would see is just like approximate location of leach field and then, you know, well-location with the radius, even if it's not a.
You can label it approximate, I guess, right?
Yeah, because the, I do have to, go ahead.
So with the septic system, Austin has talked with Dale, building inspector, about that. And one of the things that I guess he allows is that porta potties can be used for up to six months, figure out what's out there. So he'll have a little bit of time to get his business running and using these porta potties while we figure if he has to do a new system or not. It may be an improved system out there that we just don't have found yet.
Or have to go through the reapproval and all that, yeah, which takes time.
Yeah, but he told me, yeah, he told me if I got a porta potty, he would allow that until, you know, because I'm just, I mean, I'm covering all the costs myself and I can't really do a septic system immediately if it's not already there. So he said it would be, would grant me four to six months, which would get me into the spring, and then I can have a whole septic plan done by Scott and then move forward doing that.
So you have short bathroom breaks right there.
And then the, I think you stated this, but the woodwork part of it, that's, that's again, so it's kind of two separate businesses, but.
It's two separate businesses.
Your businesses and, but again, it's not, it's not retail sales except for the truck beds. There's not like people coming on.
For the woodworking?
Yeah.
No, no. The woodworking is, backs the construction company that I have. So we just, we build all our own kitchen cabinets, built-ins, entry doors. I don't really have any, I mean, I don't have people coming in like, hey, I want to buy your, I don't have a showroom or any of that.
Yeah.
It's just, it's our fabrication spot.
So Matt, how many employees would be going in and out?
Uh, five to six.
The only thing I would normally say like it'd be nice to see is somewhere around there about that. So right now you've got a really great vegetative buffer between these buildings and that residential place up front. Is maybe see some kind of restriction put in place to retain?
Oh, yeah. JJ actually asked me if I'd cut some of it, which is just like the overgrown bushes. He's like, would you mind cleaning that up? He's like, it would look a lot better. And so we've actually been working together on, you know, making it look a lot nicer. And it, if, I don't know if you saw it before, but it is a night and day. I have before and after pictures. It's a night and day difference.
Yeah, I really don't think I ever really noticed even the gate that's there.
No.
That was, has been there.
I didn't see the rock wall until we started cleaning up. I'm like, oh, this is awesome.
Buzz.
I'm going to profess my ignorance here. I haven't been involved in that many commercial proposals in this town. So I haven't heard anything mentioned about fire protection. Is that part of our zoning and on commercial properties?
Smaller than.
It's normally something, so once we, in past cases, maybe speak on turn, we usually would send the application to our, our emergency response departments, fire, police, road agent, even though they're not emergency response, but for review and comment.
Most of the time, it's handled by the building official because they're required to use. They're the jurisdiction on, you know, the internal fire suppression or anything like that.
That's what Dale said, because I want, like, I want to put an office in there. And he said, if I get it approved, now I can go ahead. I have to give them a set of plans of, you know, what I want to, do I want to leave the space just wide open? Do I want to put a reception? So when somebody walks in, you know, I have like where I keep my books, where I keep my office, my computer and that stuff. He said I would have to submit that and then he can give me, you know, approval to do that.
So the answer to my question is that it's, that's not, this board's prerogative. It's.
Not in this case because it's, you know, it's a change of use. And if it was a brand-new commercial operation, then we would likely have a note that the facility would be sprinkler protected and we would send it to the fire chief to make sure that there's a cistern within the lower eight location. But this is an existing use and an existing building that would be under the jurisdiction of the building official for the town.
To your point, Buzz, even though this is a structure, I believe square footage-wise falls under the threshold. If he was coming in with some sort of chemical business, the NFPA regulations would then trigger and he might actually have to do it, but.
In our site plan, under fire protection, does mention that the applicant shall itself and only the fire department determine why, if any, appropriate fire protection measures are reasonably necessary. So I don't necessarily see that as a, and it's here because I think that would preclude them from getting their certificate of occupancy from the building inspector.
Any other comments?
Well, just since we're on that subject, I was wondering if you had looked into if there happen to be any cisterns in the area? Because I know that there are a couple of residential areas almost across the street, I think.
There is one down, Green Hall World, there's one right down there by the subdivision entrance.
So it's fairly close.
Probably less than two thousand feet.
So are we comfortable with waiving all of the requirements? I mean, it sounds like there is a plan. Maybe there's only certain things that need to be required. I mean, it is a pretty big blanket of not, you know, waiving a whole plan. I guess.
You asking for eight point three, eight point four, and eight point five, right?
No, eight point five, what that is, is a waiver, it says waivers for specific plan submission requirements. The board is hereby authorized to waive by majority vote, those present in voting, the submission of requirements of eight point three and point four. That's the only reason I mentioned that.
Got it.
Because it refers back to. So it's giving the board the ability to waive the law.
Those sections. Sorry, we have it up there.
And just so.
Eight point three is specific information, existing site conditions.
I'm assuming you're just trying to not have to, you know, have the added expense of surveying and showing lot lines and topography.
It's also the timing.
What's that?
It's also the timing.
Yeah, and, yeah, but yeah, a waiver to the surveys to do this thing where it's an existing structure and business and we're not doing anything to change it.
Yeah, and I think as long as we capture what's necessary for this, I think, you know, they are existing and not new, that's the biggest thing for me. So on the conceptual that we had in front of us, you know, they show some wetlands that aren't shown on the plan, maybe something else. But again, if you're not proposing any new.
There's no new impact or impact.
You know, I think of that.
Okay.
So the one thing I guess, I guess I'm okay with this being a condition as long as it can be, is just.
It's not a condition, it's a waiver.
No, I'm sorry. I'm just thinking, you know, if we get into, I think the only thing that, it's part of these sections is there's reference, you know, state permits, reference to like state permits, or that might be, regardless of the driveway, there's the existing driveway. It's just the communication with NHDOT just because that relates to showing a proposed driveway and stuff like that. But you're right, it's technically outside of the waiver request. But we can talk about that, I guess, after the taking action on the waiver. Are you ready for a motion on that?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the waiver request to waive the requirements under section eight point three and eight point four of the checklist for case number two-one dash zero-one-five dash SIT.
Is there a second? Second. Gary? Discussion, those in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? One. Okay. Waiver passes. So what do we want to do? Is there more questions about the information that's been provided? Do we need more information? Do we have enough?
Do you want to talk about some things that I guess like, I'd like to see NHDOT, I don't think it's reasons to come back to us. I think it's just things that maybe are worthwhile just mentioning in the approval. Are the applicant coordinated with NHDOT? It's obviously outside of our jurisdiction, but it's part of our processes, seeing what they say. I know we talked about lighting and I think technically we waive the requirements of it here, but just reiterating that all lighting to be downcast.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't, I don't need space in my stuff.
Yeah, I just know lighting's definitely a sensitive topic here in town. Those are just kind of two things I'd like to see on there, if everybody's okay with that.
Can I ask one question? Why would, why do you think it's waived to have to, to make any requirements about lighting? Because of the waiver request?
Well, technically we waived, I mean, they're not, we're not requiring a site plan to show anything. So somebody pulled this and said, all they see is that. They don't see anything on there. So technically we waived a site plan to, for proposed conditions.
Okay.
But I just know, you know, for me, you know, lighting is definitely, it's becoming a more sensitive topic in all rural towns, so it's.
But to your point, we didn't waive that you, that.
You could still condition something on that lighting.
Yeah, it was more so just for me, I like to, it's one of those things where it's, I think it's important on a site like this and it's a simple thing that, I mean, he already wants to do it, but if it's in that condition, I think it just makes people feel better to, basically, we need to put it out there that it's on, it's a condition.
So we do, in our zoning ordinance, we do have pretty clear, so we can't waive the zoning ordinance. So there is specific language about outdoor lighting that gives you kind of standards to use when selecting lighting and type and installations. It's, oh goodness, trying to find the second for you.
They can look it up.
Yeah. Section Q, outdoor lighting, aptly named. So again, you just want to look at that before finalizing anything. And again, the last piece I had mentioned before, we have a buffer anyway for the difference between commercial and residential. But seeing something on the plan would be probably nice on the final plan of stating like that's kind of a, that a buffer will be maintained in that, between the residential and that area. That doesn't mean you can't.
You want that to be a, are you asking that to be a condition just as we mentioned or to maintain, to?
Maintain a protective buffer. I'm not sure if it's an R, zoning R and M, I do.
It seems like too that any, and it's, you know, any state requirements, state permitting requirements to be required. Whether that be septic or driveway permit.
Yeah, we're only waiving the things for our use, for this board's use as far as information.
Right.
It's not, it's not that they're, we're, they don't have a blanket waiver to do what they want.
Right, but it sounds like we're talking about conditions, right, of what we might apply to an approval.
Yeah, the condition is meet the zoning, right?
I think the thing with the septic, that the fact that you already talked to. I think the thing with the septic that, the fact that you already talked to Dale is the fact that essentially he said, here's your six, six month window. Can't have the porta potty, then if you can't have the porta potty, can't operate the business, so I guess.
Correct, yeah, he taught, yeah.
Can't remove it for a week and then put it back.
No, nor do I really want to, like.
If there's things that we should condition it, I agree, uh, you know, it is.
I mean, you could do most of the things, just to highlight it.
I think you just say state permits, right, whether the, again.
Right, condition for state driveway permit.
State permits.
Confirm all state permits or.
Any septic permit.
As required.
Yeah, he doesn't know, he's, if he installs a septic.
Septic system.
Per for that.
And then the driveway permit.
No, I'm saying student, uh.
I was thinking about signage too. I don't know if that is something we need to bring up in this case. I know that's.
Zoning, zoning handles, I thought I had that written down too.
Well, if there's one in place.
Yep.
I'm, uh, change of use. You want a motion?
Yes.
Did Dale say anything?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, case number two one dash zero one five dash SIT for the change of use on, on map three lot nine. Uh, with our, use this term, with our standard conditions of, uh, fees and everything else we just talked about, but with the additional conditions of ensuring all state permits are current, um, for the property. Um, all lighting on site be downcast as per required by the zoning ordinance. And, um, the applicant to maintain the, uh, vegetated buffer to the residential user to the south.
Second.
Motion, second. Uh, any other discussion? Those in favor indicate aye. Those opposed, unanimous.
Thank you.
I'm good to go.
Good to go.
Thank you.
All right.
Awesome. How do you guys need a truck bed? I'll give you.
Or kitchen cabinets.
Voice has been pounding me for two, for two years to build kitchen cabinets.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
No, but there is a, there is a woodworking company, wood product company right down the road, so we have a nice little, uh, consistency going now with the woodwork.
Yeah, on the left-hand side, going towards like the weed patch.
Yeah, precision cut lumber.
Yeah. I'll run a spoke with them. I'm going to get some lumber.
He's in progress, building right now.
Yeah, I just saw that. He must be getting ready for forms on.
Pass my bedtime.
Yeah.
Public comment?
You can ask Sam if you want some.
Sam, you want anything to say, say anything else? You're the only public left. And then, uh, some half updates. Buzz?
All set.
Gary?
Uh, just that I probably forgot to mention this last time, but we were talking about the bridge construction on Stage Road and, yeah, Jen had filled, I think Dirk and myself and whoever else, um, that DOT's got that slated for, I, I guess, 2024, so it's a ways off.
Not that far.
They came to the select board a while ago too, didn't they? John, didn't they come to the select board to ask you guys what your, about what type of construction, right?
Yeah, they had, they proposed in front of the select board like three different things, doing, closing the whole road down for one month and using, uh, providing the fire station around that road as the main access road. Um, or they had your one month progress, stop to finish, then back open, everything's back to normal. Uh, fire department, police didn't like that idea. So the, both they want now would be a two-year or a little bit longer process is where they dismantle half the bridge and they move it over, rebuild that section, take apart that, rebuild, and so that they always have one lane access, but they'll be the first stoplight at Nottingham now.
One temporary, yeah.
Because, you know, you gotta stop it.
It's a one lane road.
It's a one lane, it's a one lane road.
Off to daycare.
So, but it took the project from a quick destroy everything, re-put something all right back up, brand new. So a two-year, so it's going to affect a lot of people for a long time.
I'm sure the state wanted to shut down because it's cheaper construction for them.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Unfortunately, that road, every time Priest Road is not.
Well, that's for time-wise of, uh, emergency vehicles. That's why the fire department, or the police department were in favor of using. Well, it's only a thirty day period, you know, but they just didn't, they said.
For police, that'd be like a rally circuit, trying to get around Priest Road to respond.
For, you know, ambulance call.
Yeah.
Really, well, trip.
Well, like I have tattooed, I know, a few times I've seen blanding circles in town, they're down Priest Road at the power lines there.
Uh, our select meetings meeting was very quick, um, the last meeting that we had. Uh, we briefly talked about road standards, uh, but then we got that, uh, delayed because we were going to wait for a five-member board on that. Uh, taking talking on it, we had some personal private issues we had to deal with. The things going in town, that took the majority of the meeting, but that was non-public. So, I mean, literally our meeting was probably only about forty-five minutes. Uh, and that was more going over staff reports and just general everyday information, so there's nothing that came in front of us. Uh, this upcoming meeting, we were talking about, um, what we're going to do with road standards and have something that we're going to bring up on the planning board.
They are tabled right now, right?
Yeah, we're not talking about this.
No, but I mean, they've been, they've been rescinded.
Yeah, they've been rescinded, so we don't have any.
So that's one, it's on the planning board page. I just found that, saw it today. We actually have a link to the select boards.
Road standards. They're technically still up there, right? But I think there's text added saying just for reference purposes.
Right, yeah.
Chris modified the language just to say so people can see what it was. I saw that.
Well, Chris, so when we open it up to a public meeting, people can actually have, uh, input from what used to be there.
Yeah, okay.
So that's the reason why it was posted, because we had this conversation about that, by having those posted, so we do go public in this comment, people can see what the old standards were to new ones, and this is why we're discussing.
That makes sense. I thought maybe it was just an old link or an old.
Nope.
Piece carryover on the planning board.
Are you, is your road standard discussion separate from your, the board's discussion with the owner of Moore's Road? Is that, you guys treating that as two separate things?
Yes, two different things. So we sent Jim, I mean, that was a quick conversation, is the highway department, Sean went down, looked at the road. Um, made a bunch of comments and we decided to give it to Jim, because Jim was offering to support a lot of the construction and the stuff to get done on the road in order to bring it up to what Sean would feel would be an acceptable, um, road.
And the idea there's.
So there's no standards, but just saying what Sean would feel like this road would be acceptable for the town to say, yes, we can accept your road. If you did X, Y, Z, all the stuff to it, he would feel that it would be a road that is willing and acceptable. So we're using his reference and his opinion on what needs to be done in order to make it a.
Cause that's the open condition right now, right? It's technically been accepted, but.
Correct.
The condition was it had to meet a town standard of some sort.
Correct, but there wasn't, there was an earlier standard, so it's, but, so we're trying to meet common ground.
True.
Ed? So after, I'll just throw myself on the sword now, after being the one that pushed for the, uh, meeting next week with the zoning board and, and COMCOM, uh, for zoning updates, I may not be able to be made. I have, trying to determine childcare for that night, uh, so I'm doing my best. I'm hopeful to be here, but.
You owe us.
Yeah. I might be here, but I'm just, in case.
It's just an invasive.
I'd say it in person and email.
Bring a kid in.
It's two, two year old, a five year old.
Two, sure.
Just shut the door.
It's no different than it is now.
Uh, I, the only update I have is that the, um, planning board's transportation subcommittee submitted a formal letter to the select board, um, last week to, uh, have them review the scenic roads, um, placards. And although one fifty-six is now striped, uh, we still would like to have conversations with DOT um, about adding some capacity for bicycles, uh, along the shoulders.
Especially since those are state bike, bike routes.
Um, we could tag salt usage over our aquifers at some point.
Yeah.
But that's not in the formal letter.
That's not in the formal, so that gets.
Down the road.
And we're, we're hoping that the select board will take some action.
Do you think that will happen at your next meeting, John?
We haven't struck the bridge in yet, so I don't know if it's on there, but I haven't seen the, the letter yet. You did it this week?
I did it last week. I emailed it to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, prior to the meeting.
But, oh, I haven't.
He handed it to you.
Monday's meeting?
Last meeting.
Yeah, prior to Monday's last meeting, uh, prior to Monday's meeting. Yeah, it went out to all the select board members.
You asked for a hot copy at the last meeting and he gave it to you.
Sorry, I, it's all right. Nine twenty, I get it. Anyway, for the information, that's been submitted formally, so hopefully they'll, they'll follow up.
The placards would be great, obviously with the three hundred coming up, I think it's perfect time for something like that to, hopefully some money in the budget to finally just push, push that off, get that done.
Yeah, yeah.
Sue?
Um, we wrapped up our water testing, the conservation commission, um, this summer and we had volunteers from the community, which was, which was really a, uh, a blessing, because last year we were only able to test once a month. But with the, this, um, assistance, we were able to go back to every two weeks. So, thank you, Nottingham.
Yeah, uh, mine was a question, actually a question back to Gary. Did you have, I saw it was on that email chain about the CIP. Was there any mention of the CIP on that Kelsey Road over, yeah?
They didn't have.
The meeting is going to be next week.
Is that next week?
Yeah, and so back at you, or at everybody.
Did you want to be on that?
I've had conversations with Chris about the Kelsey Road one, because I've read that report and been a little invested in it. I couldn't make, I thought it was this week, so I couldn't make it, but.
On, it's, but now it's not this week, it's next.
Next week.
Next Tuesday.
I'm willing to consider it as long as, uh, I've invested, uh, interest in that kind of stuff, so. You can keep me in the loop and I'm happy to assist in there. I know I've already talked.
Keep you on tentative.
Do we have a, so who's our CIP, is, are we, are we CIP or?
We don't have a, uh, no one jumped.
Well, no, I, I said I would go.
Yeah, I think Gary did it, but with S O B C.
It was like so last minute.
Right.
So I'm planning on.
Okay, so he's planning on, all right, good.
But, but a question to the board, and maybe nobody knows the answer, I don't know. I think, I was just thinking about, I know we're supposed to be, um, becoming members at Stratford Regional.
Yeah.
I don't know where that money's coming from, if it's coming out of our budget.
Select board.
Selectman? Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Yep. It's coming from somewhere outside of.
So I'll make sure I get spent that soon.
It still comes out of your pocket though.
And then my only thing was, uh, are we, have we looked at the schedule for any sort of amendments? In terms of like when we have to have draft language by? We're going up on November pretty quick.
Yeah, that's why, uh, we're going to have this meeting next week.
With the zoning.
Twenty third, with the zoning.
And I still have building height stuff that we can, uh, we have that discussion, so.
Yeah, then we'll need to follow up with that, but yeah, the, the schedule, the goal for, yeah, next week, the six, six o'clock for next Wednesday, was the.
Right.
To kind of bring up those items, see if they had anything else or any comment about what we have prepared and then move on, but hopefully get it, stuff prepped for, for our, this. All the hearings. I had the schedule somewhere, but I just have way too much paper right now.
Charlene?
I've got nothing.
Claire? Gavin?
Uh, well, do you have an agenda for that, uh, meeting on the twentieth? Where we, we talked about, is there going to be an agenda for it?
There, there will be an agenda.
Is that something you would be crafting or?
Yeah, it's going to fall very closely to the guidelines of the RCP's, um, priority list that we have.
Yeah, one was emailed over to you.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think everybody got a copy of that, but if not, I'll redistribute it ahead of that meeting, so that we'll just use that as the. That'll act as the.
Does that have to be posted? Uh, said that you have to post that?
The agenda.
Public meeting, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Not, not that.
The, the agenda right now is posted already online, I believe, for, that's a joint meeting between planning board and zoning board and conservation commission, but you don't have to actually post the.
You don't have to post what, the, what, what.
The documents associated with it?
Yeah.
You can, but right now they're not even. It looks like next meeting after that is going to be pretty busy potentially. And then we get into November and then December.
That's it?
They move fast, twenty twenty-two is on the, uh, list.
Jeez.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody's yes. I see it.
Yes.
I see it in their eyes. Well, not really, they're closed. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Sticking around.